Good evening, everyone. It's 5:15 and I would like to open the May 11th, 2023 meeting of the Stanton City Council. Is there a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas?
Mayor or Vice Mayor Darby?
Okay. I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion by Counselor Wood and Counselor Robertson. Please call the roll.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next item will be discussion of award system of electing members of city council. And I'll ask Councilmember Edwards to introduce this item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Darby. Yes, I invited Mr. Butch Smiley, Mr. Judd Bankert to come to our work session to present a topic that is very near and dear to their heart, something they brought up to me as an issue in the summertime and many of us candidates who were running were approached about this issue and it kind of became an issue during our campaign during the election. And so we heard a lot about it. It was brought up at pretty much maybe three or four of our debates. So a lot of the citizens of Stanton heard about it as well. It's been covered in the newspaper. And I thought that the problems that they presented for the at-large system warranted our hearing and discussion. And so we have Mr. Judd Bankert and Butch Smiley. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for, thank you for having us. We appreciate the time that you've allotted us. We understand that you're, you're pressed for time a little bit. You have other business. So we're going to make this really brief. Our purpose tonight is to introduce this concept to you. It is a, it can be a fairly complicated process. So we're not looking for a specific yea or nay tonight, but we wanted to use a little bit of time to introduce it to you and let you know how we got here and why we both think that it is something that we feel is in the best interest of the city for all the citizens of Stanton and, and their respective representatives, which, which are you at the time. About, I guess it was about 12 years ago, Judd and I were talking. Judd approached me with the idea of, he said, I, I think we need to go to a ward system rather than an at-large system in the city of Stanton. We were both working at the time. I said, you know, I like the concept. Let's talk about it. We did a little bit and then we decided we were going to meet again. Well, here we are 12 years later, 15 years later, and we met again. So we got together and I said, we need, we really need some real information. We need some data. And Judd went and got that with some help of some really helpful people. And the conclusion to me as sort of being on the fence was, we really do need to do this. And so what we're going to do tonight, what we're going to attempt to do is to convince you why we think that this subject merits real conversation amongst you and amongst the citizen. And I'm, I'm really pleased to see that some of you are going out in the community and actually having listening sessions or town halls or whatever you choose to call it. We think that is one of the benefits of a ward system. A ward system is, in, in our view, the, still the purest form of democracy in this country because you're closest to the people regardless of any state or any federal. You're here with the people and you live among the folks that you're actually representing. You see them in churches, you see them in schools. And what we think is that each ward in the town deserves having a representative. Now, some people say, well, they've already got, they got seven representatives and they do. So we're not arguing that point. But one of the advantages of a ward system is you have neighbors that are actually voting for their neighbors who are in that ward. And one, it makes you more accountable to them. It improves communication, not only from you to them, but more importantly, from them to you. And you're not hearing it in a room like this where some people, I'm telling you, they're not going to come down here and stand in front of a big crowd with a microphone to voice their concerns. It's much easier. You're going to get a truer picture. You're going to be able to look people in the eye and, and listen to what their issues are. Another objection that we've heard is, well, it, it pits sections of the city against other sections of the city. And our counter to that is, why would you stifle conversation that could be uncomfortable? It's better, that's why you're elected, is to sit down and look at what the issues are in town. You're hearing the issues if you go to a ward system from the ground roots rather than in this forum or from staff at City Hall. So you're actually dealing with people that you live with. It's going to allow for you, to be honest with you, you're going to have to be more accountable than what you may be if you're all there as a group. If you go to a ward system, you're going to have to run in that ward system. If you want to get reelected, you are going to have to be accountable to how'd you perform the last four years. Another primary benefit is that you've all run campaigns and you've all run them successfully. You know the cost and the time that's involved with running a campaign. If it is a ward specific campaign that you're running, it's going to cut the cost. You're going to be more effective in the time and you're going to be able to listen more rather than the other way around. There were some candidates in the last election spent more than $10,000. And not everybody has access to those funds. Not everybody has the time to go out and solicit those funds and raise them. Another thing that we've heard, and this is what really, this is what got my gall, is when I was out in the community talking to people, most people, and we, we've done a small poll that we're going to share with you, thought it was a good idea. But what really bothered me was, there was a segment that I talked to that said, we want an at-large system. And the reason we want an at-large system is because we want those who have the best-looking resume, are more influential in town, and are the most intelligent. And that bothered me because I know, particularly from my background, where I come from, there are extremely smart people who didn't necessarily get a, a four-year degree or a master's degree or anything like that. And they got good street common sense. And I think that the, the cost and time that is part of an election cycle, I think it precludes them. I think it actually discourages them from running. So you're going to, you're going to save money. You're going to be more effective. You're going to be more efficient. Another item, if you think a little bit out of the box, is we all talk about the lack of voter participation in local elections. What better way for you as representatives to be voter registration proponents in your wards to get people to vote? Sign them up to vote, get them interested in the process. We think there's a lot of merit in being able to do that as well. We think it's going to make you more effective. It's going to make you more efficient. It's going to make you more educated about the, the items that concern folks within their wards. The other thing is, it's going to, it's going to generate conversation amongst yourselves that you may not be hearing right now. If somebody's in Ward Three, they may not know what's going on over in Ward Five and vice versa. One of the things that's disturbing, and you'll look at the, in, in the information that we provided you, there are three wards in the last 20 years. One ward had not had representation for 10 years, another one for eight, and another one for 18 years they have not had a representative. So what we're asking you to do is look at the information. We would encourage you to go out when you're doing your listening sessions to talk to people and get their ideas. We think, again, that it merits enough conversation or that it's an important enough subject that it should merit conversation, not only between you, but with folks that come down here. There are going to be people that object to this. So hear them out and let's see what's, what's best for the city. The small poll we did was from voters of this last election. It is a very small sample. It's 43. We don't know who they are. We engaged someone to do that for us. You may ask, what if nobody ran an award? Well, then you're exactly where you were with Mr. Holmes. You had, what, 19 applicants?
Twenty.
So you're going to, you're going to be able to, to get to garner, to garner people coming, coming in and that are going to be interested. Another concern that we had is, well, we're, there's a possibility, what if all, everybody got not elected, reelected? Unlikely, but it's possible. What about all the institutional knowledge that, that you lose? And that's, that's a fact. There would be some institutional knowledge that you lose. But you have to remember, you have staff. You hired staff. You have a city manager. You have a city attorney. They're really where you need your institutional knowledge. So we think there's merit to it. What we would ask you to consider, what we think is best for the city, we'll ask you to do your due diligence and see whether you agree or not. We think you need seven wards. And we think you need, everybody in the ward know at large. We think you need a mayor. And we think you, you, you should take it to a referendum and let people actually have a say in what, what we're doing here in town. We're fairly certain, we don't, we'll defer to the, to Mr. Blair, the city attorney, probably going to need a charter change. And that scares people. It's not that, it's not as, it's cumbersome, but it can be done. It does not affect the city manager, government that we all, that we all like. So with that, I'll turn it over to Judd and let Judd talk to you briefly.
I haven't got a lot to add. When I first came to Butch about this, that, that term you found at the beginning of your packet, government closest to the people is the best. But this is an attempt to do, instead of having to represent or focus on almost 12,000 households, every city council member would have about 1,000, their neighbors. They, they would learn about the issues by talking across their fences. Butch covered a lot of material in a big, in, in a short time, increased trust in government, a sense of solidarity within the community. Anyone who's looking forward to the future realizes every community in this country, problems and a divided community is not what we need. We need a community that feel, that they all feel they're participating and that they all have a voice in, in their own government. Butch just touched on it just a little bit, the idea that certain areas in the city have a monopoly on integrity, intelligence, character. We, we hope you believe as we do that that is not the case. Butch made a reference to a poll. I want to go back the, to 1975, when this last issue was raised. And I think the news leader actually has done a fine job in the five articles. They, they have written about this topic. If you haven't had a chance to read them, I, I would hope you'd go back and, and look at their archives. City Council addressed this issue, even had a referendum and the mayor at the time said, this is a referendum that says we are going to go to wards. But there were some complications in that. But in 1975, when the question was asked, 170 citizens came to three city council sessions and by a two-to-one margin, they supported the idea. We, we, this idea of having an ear in every part of the city and a voice from every part of the city on city council, that sense of, it's really a matter of fairness. We see it in every other aspect of our government for citizen's sake. And this is the only, city council is the only one that is not a single representative ward system. Butch made a reference to a poll and we do have one. It only had 43 voters. All of them were going to participate and did vote in the, in the city council election. One of the questions they were asked is, do you think Stanton's election method currently favors any area, income level, age group, et cetera? Eighty percent of the respondents said yes. They said, community members that have resources, more resources than others. There was one response, the person went in, I, I won't read the entire entry, but what they said was Stanton is a wonderful town. And that's a credit to those who have led. But there is no doubt, parts of the town and some citizens have been left out. The West End is a great example, but only one example. It is difficult also to represent the West End without having experienced living here. Direct representation of this diverse commen, community is needed. And one of the other questions was, what was the biggest obstacle to participating on city council or running for city council? Seventy percent of the respondents said funding. The barrier, financial barrier of either having the money or knowing someone. And as Butch touched on, people have talked about the concern and in your packet, we addressed four or five questions and one of them will people come forward. But we just had an example, when those barriers, the barrier of funding and resume and campaigning throughout the city and voting for strangers, when that was all removed, look at the number of people who came forward and they came forward from all over the city. So this, this, this idea that there are, because the people haven't run in the past from some of these areas, well, because they know they don't have much of a chance of getting elected from these areas. So I, I want to leave one last comment that someone left with us. I do not fully, I do fully support this initiative to give more voices to underrepresented areas of Stanton. Even though, this is the one I thought, even though it would hurt me since I live in Ward Five, this sense of fairness, I think, maybe you sense it. I think if you, if you, if you give the opportunity for the community to speak, I think you will hear it loud and clear. So I think we-
One final thing, if, if we, if the city goes to a ward system, imagine how that will reflect truly on, it will give an opportunity, it will afford us an opportunity to reflect the demographics and the socioeconomic conditions of everyone in this town. So we, we thank you for your time. We hope that you will, will consider that. And we think it's important and we think it's not what Judd and I think. We think it's important that everybody in the city come forward and actually discuss this. And again, kudos to you for having the listening sessions and going out. And I'm, I'm glad to see that you're doing that. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, Butch, because I know that was actually one of the things that I said when I ran in 2020, that I was in favor of a ward system. But you didn't get a lot of, unfortunately, because we were dead in the middle of COVID, you didn't have a lot of listening sessions and that kind of thing. So it wasn't aired out like it was in y'all's election. But I'm curious, or either Judd or you, do you have an answer? When you said in 75, that it was a two-to-one kind of vote, and even the mayor said, it sounds like we're going to ward, what stopped it? Do you know, what, what was the reason?
We did not do research on this, but the news leader did. They did an extensive article and what it got wrapped up in is affirmative action at the time and concern, there was a, the newspaper calls it a dog whistle. And the dog whistle was that if we make the change, the federal government's going to come in and interfere with our elections. And at that point in time, that was a highly explosive issue. And according to the news leader, I, I was not here in Stanton at the time, but that was, it became, for lack of a better term, I guess, a racial issue. And-
Now that you say that-
That's unfortunate.
Remember? Now that you say that, that was the year I graduated from Lee and, or Stanton. Yeah. And, and that was my final year and then went to Bridgewater. And now that you say that, I think I start remembering some of those conversations even as a senior in high school. So, okay.
In, in the article, I think it's the third one they did, they reproduced some of the ads, which specifically talked to that issue. We don't want the federal government coming in. And apparently Richmond was already under scrutiny. And so that was, that was the fear.
Well, if you do, if you were to do a ward system, my, my concern would be that people of color would be, the vote would be diluted, you know, unless you had a section or, or a ward that had a predominant black.
I think if, if you go to a ward system, Mr. Holmes, that you go to seven wards, you're going to have to draw seven wards. And that is where the real work would come in. And we're certainly no experts in, in doing that. But you, you have access to those people in order to come up with wards that, that would be fair to everybody. So it's a valid concern that you have. It's one that we share. But we think draw, how you draw those wards is going to be indicative of what the result's going to be.
Butch, would that, would that entail, you know, this last few years with, with state, with federal government, you know, I mean, would we end up drawing those wards and then we're going to have challenges to those wards and then it may end up going to a judge or a panel or whatever?
I would, I would defer to Mr. Blair on that.
Yeah. Well, if you- Mr. Blair?
I think there, I, you know, listening to this conversation, a couple of things that probably are relevant to the discussion from the seventies and today. There was a case, I believe it's 2009 or 2010 called Shelby. And it's a U.S. Supreme Court case. Before that case, there were a series of states and localities throughout America that, subject to the Voting Rights Act, had to get what was called preclearance from the United States Department of Justice for any change in voting methods or practices. And the Shelby case ruled that unconstitutional, meaning that no longer did those specific localities have to get what was called preclearance at the time from the United States Department of Justice. But had this occurred in 1975, before it could have been implemented, it would have had to have gone to the Department of Justice for preclearance to make sure that minority voting rights were protected. Now, as to your other questions, there are potentially three things you would look at. First is seven wards. What you would do if you went to a ward system is you have to, there's a 1966 U.S. Supreme Court case called Baker v. Carr, which says, one man, one vote. We call it one person, one vote now. And essentially, the districts have to be equal in population. So every 10 years, every new U.S. Census, you would have to make sure that all seven wards had roughly equal population. So that's one potential, when you ask about challenges. The second challenge, and since it would require a charter change, it's really not, there's not been anything in Virginia like this. There was something called the Virginia Voting Rights Act, where people colloquially call it the Baby Voting Rights Act, which said effectively, the Attorney General of Virginia had to approve any change in voting methods or procedures. Now, since this would be a charter change, if you decided to go forward, I'm not sure that's relevant. I think the Attorney General is required to look at the bills that are submitted. So if there was a charter change that the General Assembly had to approve, you, I, I'm going to assume that it would meet that standard. I don't know. Could certainly inquire about that. And then finally, there's still part of the Voting Rights Act, you may be aware, you still cannot, as Counselor Holmes put it, dilute the votes of an ethnic minority group. You probably are aware, there have been a number of challenges to state redistricting plans in 2022. I believe the one from Alabama is before the U.S. Supreme Court right now, waiting for a decision to decide what sort of redistricting and districting of, of voters of color may or may not violate the Voting Rights Act. So when you ask about potential legal issues, again, apportionment, equal, equal number of folks. Number two, the Virginia Voting Rights Act, I, I don't really know that that's applicable. And number three would still be the Federal Voting Rights Act. If there was a feeling that switching from at-large to a ward system diluted minority voting ability to elect candidates of color, potentially there could be a challenge, but I don't know.
Well, if you went with five wards and two at-large, would, would that, would that solve that problem? Or, or, or would it just guarantee more people from the same ward?
I, I don't think any of it is, is lawsuit proof, but I tell you that all the time. I think it's, it's always a question of, when you talk about at-large versus ward systems in the voting rights context, a lot of it is concentration of particular ethnic or racial groups in a part of a city, for instance. Let's take the converse here. If you were to say, well, and you had a ward and you wanted to go to an at-large, well, if you had, say, 60% Caucasian city, but the way the ward system was set up, that a majority of council was black or Asian or Hispanic, you might challenge, you might seize a voter, challenge it per the Voting Rights Act to say, well, that would dilute the strength of the ward system. So again, a lot of it, I can't answer. You'd have to look at maps, concentrations of voters and potential ramifications of switching from one system to the other.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Gentlemen, thank you so much. We allotted 15 minutes and we really appreciate your speak, coming tonight, talking to this with us. And I think it is the discussion that we will need to continue on in the future. But at this time, I'd like us to move on.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
We look forward to having you back. Thank you.
Is it possible, just to take a second to, can we follow up with any action or? No? Okay.
I mean, at this point, it was just for discussion. So-
No, yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
I was just going to ask what next steps could possibly be.
I, one thing I had asked them in the past that I didn't see on there, I think it was Ward Two that hasn't had representation in a long time. But I, I'm still unclear as to whether people have been running for Ward Two and not gotten elected or just have not been running for Ward Two on that. And I, we just didn't have that info.
Well, could we-
But they ran away.
Could we move forward? And that's-
Yeah.
Yeah. But we need to move forward with asking Mr. Blair and, and the city manager to, to, you know, do some more research and history regarding, you know, the, the patterns, the voting pattern, things that's happened here in the, the city and report back to us so that we have more information so we can discuss it in the future. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And then I would like to now entertain a motion for us to go into a closed session. If someone would be so inclined.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Counselor Edwards?
I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal-related advice and discussion regarding the order to show cause in Stanton Circuit Court cases, CL 21500, concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court facility located in the District Courts Building at 6 East Johnson Street, Stanton, as well as city and state laws regarding subdivision approval pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711A7 and 223711A8. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property located within the city limits of Stanton, Virginia, for use as a court facility where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of negotiating strategy on the public body pursuant to City Code 2.23711A3. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second that. Terry Holmes.
Thank you, Counselor Holmes. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like to reconvene the Stanton City Council for its regular meeting. If everyone, we need to certify-
Need to certify.
Confirm the closed session.
Confirm the closed session. So if someone could.
I have a motion, Mayor. I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted, exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kessker, we have a motion for certification that's been seconded, and would you please call the roll?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's now seven o'clock, and I'd like to reconvene the Stanton City Council for its regular meeting. If everyone will please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, this evening, it is my turn to do the invocation. And usually, I do a Christian prayer, but tonight, I will be recognizing Mother's Day since it's this Sunday. So if everyone would just take a moment with me to remember, think about our mothers, and I will give you one fact that I found out about Mother's Day that I didn't know, that I thought was interesting. It kind of has a Stanton connection. Back in nineteen fourteen, Mother's Day became an official holiday by President Woodrow Wilson. And he proclaimed that Mother's Day would be celebrated every year on the second Sunday of May. So I just thought that was very special. And that's all for that. So this evening, we, let's see, I'm going to do a proclamation for Public Works Week. So, the City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation for National Public Works Week, May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and well-being of the people of Stanton. And whereas, infrastructure and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, and solid waste systems, as well as public buildings and other facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of Stanton to gain and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council that May the twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three is hereby designated as Public Works Week in the City of Stanton, and council urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, adopted this eleventh day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
On behalf of the entire Stanton Public Works Department, I'd like to thank council for this proclamation. I'm a firm believer that the greatest praise for any public works organization is to be ignored, but for one week a year, I make an exception for that, and I appreciate everyone calling attention to what, what our team is doing for the city. We enjoy it, and we hopefully will continue to get this kind of support. So thanks.
Thank you, Jeff and all your people.
Let's take a picture of Jeff. his responsibilities in his absence, so please bear with me. I'm gonna do my very best. And so we will not have a mayor's report this evening. But at this time, if any of members of council have anything they would like to report, please feel free to do so.
Well, we all went up on Betsy Bell today. It's our, it's my ninth time up on Betsy Bell. It's been very uneventful, but, but it's really nice to go up there, and it's great to have that much greenage inside the city. We do need to put a road on that thing because we rode up there, and we didn't, we're lucky we didn't tip over.
Our teeth shook, though.
Yeah, lost. Thank goodness we didn't see anything out of the ordinary.
Anyone else?
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you, ma'am. I'd like to share with everyone that Counselor, Councilwoman Woods and I had a wonderful tour of our Temple House of Israel a week and a half ago. We saw a lot of history. We heard great stories about this historic property, a lot of the architectural features, Sam Collins, Sam Collins' structure, yes. Okay. And she was very gracious, the director of the temple, and invites anyone from the community to, to contact her and have a tour of, of that beautiful house of worship. I also wanted to mention that I was supporting our wonderful gym, our YMCA, the other evening in a fun way. They were having a fundraiser. I've been a longtime member and sometimes, sometimes attendee of that place. And we had a trivia night at the Clock Tower the other night and raised a lot of money for the programming at the YMCA. And I also had the opportunity to attend a school board meeting the other evening, and a wonderful, wonderful school board meeting. We honored the retirees from all of the schools, cafeteria staff, and I'll tell you, the supervisors, principals, administrators got up and just sang the praises of our, our school staff. And I think there were fourteen retirees, and it, the accumulated years were two hundred and twelve years of experience that Stanton City Schools will be, will be losing. But it was a bittersweet ceremony to see how much respect these people were getting, but also watching them go off and have a new chapter in their lives.
Counselor Robertson, do you have a nomination?
I do. Yeah. All right. It is my pleasure to make the nominations, the nominating committee met yesterday afternoon to have interviews and to make appointments and reappointments. So if you will bear with me, we have not quite as long a list as the last time, but the nominations committee met on May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and would like to make the following motions. To appoint Anna Bendrum to the Redevelopment and Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Allison Profeta, ending on February the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. To appoint Sandy Carraro, or Carrero, as retail representative to fill the unexpired term of Anna Showin Doobie, ending on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. To appoint Michelle Davis to the Tourism Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Sandy Carrero, ending on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This next one, to appoint a really nice young man, we had a blast with this name, to appoint Chester Johnston to the Youth Commission for a three-year term beginning June the first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. He is the son of Jeff Johnston, and Jeff, you've done a good job.
Oh, wow.
To appoint William Willett to the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro to fill the unexpired term of Judy Bertner, ending on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. To reappoint Ross Williams to the Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning on June the first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. To reappoint Robert Higgs to the Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning on June first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. To reappoint Bradley Lyle to the Youth Commission for a three-year term beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. To reappoint Susan Richardson to the Blue Ridge Criminal Justice Board for a two-year term beginning on June first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. To reappoint Amy Darby to the Central Shenandoah Planning District for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. To reappoint Amanda Demio, DeMeo, to the Shenandoah Valley Partnership for a two-year term beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And now, these next ones are for the Virginia Municipal League for City Council members. To appoint Steve Claffey as the elected official member of the Virginia First Cities Board of Directors for two thousand twenty-three. To appoint Brad Arrowood to the VML Community and Economic Development Policy Committee for two thousand twenty-three. To appoint Mark Robertson to the VML Finance Policy Committee for two thousand twenty-three. To appoint Alice Woods to the VML General Laws Policy Committee for two thousand twenty-three. To appoint Michelle Edwards to the VML Human Development and Education Poly, Policy Committee for two thousand twenty-three. And to appoint Amy Darby to the VML Infrastructure Policy Committee for two thousand twenty-three. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilman Robertson. That, that comes from committee, so we do not need a motion at this time. So we will move on to approval of minutes.
Vice Mayor, we, we still need, even though we don't need a second, we need a vote from council on the nomination.
There you go. Okay, so is, there's, we don't need a second, so there is a motion to approve. Mr. Kessker, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, I, I did want to mention a couple of things I had a chance to do over the last couple of weeks. Now, as Ms. Edwards says, if you get a chance to visit the temple, Ms. Ruth Chadrau was the one that, that sets that up. She was so happy to bring you through it, and it's just such an interesting, architecturally significant building as well, too, just from, from that standpoint alone. Also had a, a chance to go to a presentation about Union Town, sort of, it was run by Ophi Kair, who did the, the What We Lost about the Central Avenue, sort of the, What We Lost, the sequel for Union Town. And that was just a great informative thing at Booker T. Washington Center there. A few of us were there, Ms. Woods and Ms. Edwards as well, on that. And this last Sunday, I had a chance to go to the Party in the Park. It was sort of the full bands thing of the junior high, high school, there were even some elementary students, choirs there as well. And it was a little damp, but it was, it was great. They do such a, the band directors do such a great job. And Mr. Nesmith just won a Dauborn Award, too, for teaching with that, too. So we just have such a, a great band program in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arrowood. Anyone else?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Darby, I just want to elaborate a little bit on, Councilmember Arrowood just said about the What We Lost about Union Town. It was presented about building bridges for the greater.
Oh, yes, excuse me. Yeah, yeah. Ophi Kair for building bridges. That's true. Yes, I rolled over that.
It was quite a few of us there, three council members here, Arrowood, Edwards, myself, and some city staff was there. And it was just phenomenal about how they're coming together, and now they, they, I believe they are ready to push for it, as that is one of our priorities that we talked about in our retreat, is to help them, help that community to build back what they lost a long time ago. We had, they had some residents that lived there and have property there, and one of the people, Robert Stewart, he wants to build, he has property, and he wants to build his home there. We also had someone from not in that community, but purchased property, and she, she spoke up, and she said, yes, she is ready to help the residents any way she can, because she is now living in that community. So it was great if any of you all have a chance to come out, you know, something, if they do it again, it would be something beneficial for all councils, maybe show up and support.
Thank you. Anyone else? The only thing I will mention is just, we are getting ready to have a large class of Stanton High School students graduate. So the class of two thousand twenty-three will graduate next Saturday, the twentieth. So we want to wish them all well. Okay, so let's move on. Next thing will be, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget work session minutes of April twentieth, twenty-three, and work session and regular meeting minutes of April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Robertson.
I make a motion that we approve the budget work session minutes of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, as printed.
I second that.
Mr. Kessker, there's been a motion and seconded to approve the budget work session minutes of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do the next one.
Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, I move to approve the, the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Oh, work session. Regular meeting.
Minutes from.
April twenty-seventh.
Twenty-two.
Thank you.
That was a team effort. That was a team effort.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Mr. Kessker, we've had a motion and a second to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of April twenty-seventh, which you please call the roll.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will now have a public hearing and consideration of an. in consideration of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Happy Birthday America Incorporated. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Blair will walk us through this item this evening.
Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Darby, Council. Before you tonight is a annual tradition. And it is the city's lease of part of Gypsy Hill Park to the Happy Birthday America Found- Foundation. There really isn't any real change from the lease approved last year. The only thing I would note of any real significance here is that this will be the Fourth of July, you know, this will be the annual Fourth of July. And sometimes folks might think that the lease only applies to the Fourth of July. But if you take a look at the term of the lease, actually, we don't have the dates there. But typically, we work with the Happy Birthday folks to eventually settle on a couple, it's usually a couple of days before the Fourth that they need to set up. But that's why it's blank. We need to make, you know, we're not quite there as to what date we exactly need. But with your approval tonight, staff will work with the Happy Birthday Organization to ultimately fill in those blanks.
Questions? That was my only question about any changes, so no. A motion, please.
Madam Mayor.
We've got the public-
We gotta have a public hearing. Gosh.
Okay, in a moment, I will, I'm going to read the rules for the public hearing. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council meeting for other public hearings and matters of the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. And I will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Langdon Reed. I am one half of the duo Wilson Fairchild. And I'm here on behalf of Happy Birthday America Organization. And I really don't have a lot of comments as far as, I can answer any questions. I'm also here with Andrew Dietz, who is the president of our organization, as well as Mary Sue Traxler. And they can probably tell you a little bit more about those lease terms as well. But we do just want to say, as this, personally and professionally, this event, this Fourth of July event is personal for me. It's been going on a long time for my family, since 1970. So you do the math, and it's over 50 years that this has been happening right here in the wonderful town of Stanton. And it was started as a way to give back to the community. And that is still our main goal. It is not about anything else, other than, of course, celebrating our freedoms and our opportunities of what the Fourth of July to America and this great country is about. And we do it in a, in a small town and in a big time way. And that's with music and parades and family fun, food, fireworks. And, and, and it's, we, Happy Birthday America is all volunteer nonprofit organization. We've got a wonderful committee. And I just want to say it is about the community. So therefore, it cannot be done without the community. And that means everybody here in the city. Thank you to all of you all, the city manager. We have meeting, this is an ongoing event. Obviously, it happens on the, you know, over the course of the Fourth of July. But meetings are happening every month throughout the year to make sure. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that happen. And to make sure that schedules are coordinated and questions are answered and concerns are taken care of. But thank you to, to, and then when you start listing, you're going to leave somebody out. But, you know, the police, the fire, the tourism, city manager, and Jeff Johnson's already said that he just wants to be ignored, so ignore him. We'll give him credit. But anyway, everybody plays an integral part. And just a big high five to everybody in the community for being so accommodating. And it's so great when, when you have a request or a concern or something that you want to approach to, to make this event better for the community. And you have people sitting on the other side who are willing to say, yep, we'll do it, we'll take care of it. So thank you to all of you. I'll turn things over to Andrew, and maybe he can say a few words as well.
All right.
My name is Andrew Dietz. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Andrew.
My name is Andrew Dietz, and I'm, as Langdon mentioned, I'm the president of Happy Birthday America. Just add a couple of thoughts here. First of all, I'm really here tonight to report back to Will on Langdon, so nice job. Appreciate that. But also, my address is 27 Redbud Hollow Lane, Stanton, Virginia, although I'm on the outskirts of Stanton. I was born and raised here. This, this tradition has been big and for myself and my family as well. My heart will always be here in Stanton. And I think that's the beauty of the group that we work with. Every single individual is a volunteer or a nonprofit organization that cares deeply about this community as much as you all do and very much appreciate what you all do to help us have an amazing community here in Stanton and the surrounding areas. But we appreciate your partnership, your collaboration, and support has been, that was it, was it? Did somebody flip the light?
It was probably Langdon.
It was Langdon.
It doesn't surprise me one bit. Andrew, you're done.
Go sit down.
He told me he had 17 pages. But we very much appreciate your consideration, your partnership. The city has truly been a pleasure to work with each step of the way. I'm also not going to list off every group, but it's, it's been awesome, and it's been a great partnership. So thanks again for your consideration. And we very much looking forward to this year. It's going to be a big one, so.
All right.
That's all I have to share.
Thank you all for everything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, is there anyone on Zoom?
We did have one, but it looks like they put their hand down, so.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing regarding the Happy Birthday America lease? Okay. Okay, well, if no one else wants to speak, public hearing is closed. See, now we just need to have motion regarding this.
Vice Mayor.
Councilor Holmes.
I move that city council adopt the ordinance authorizing the approval of the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Happy Birthday America Incorporated, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement with such modifications and in final form as approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Looking forward to it. Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to it.
Gentlemen, calendars. Looking forward to it. Amen.
Please.
Second, Mr. Blair. Okay. We will now move on to Item B, which is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance authorizing the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Stanton Baseball Incorporated for the limited use of the baseball field and operation of concession rights. Mr. Blair.
You looking at me?
Yeah, I, sure. So obviously, we just hit into a double play there.
All right.
But again, before you, just again, I think these are a couple of always good moments for council every year. It's the lease with the Stanton Braves to use city facilities again for their 2023 season. Just like on the Happy Birthday America lease, you'll see that the dates are blank. Now, we do note, we're not going to, no field activity will begin between, before May the 20th of this year. However, again, I think there's still a question about the exact date, timing in terms of the lease term, so they are blank. So with your approval tonight, eventually, we'll get the final dates for both beginning and concluding the lease term. But obviously, they plan to start soon, so we do need the lease. We need you to consider the lease this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. And we do have to have a public hearing on this as well. So I will. Public hearing is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this topic, please feel free to come to the podium. And we will take callers by Zoom also. Mr. Blair, do I need to read the rules again?
No, no, there's a block for the evening.
But, okay. Is anyone wishing to speak about the public hearing regarding the Stanton Baseball Incorporated? Mr. Kessinger, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. I'm, will end the public hearing, and that is now closed. If there's a motion.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Councilor Woods.
I move that the city's council adopt the ordinance authorizing approval of the lease agreement between the City of Stanton and Stanton Baseball Incorporated for the limited use of the baseball field and operation of concession rights beginning May 20th, 2023, and further authorizing the city manager be authorized to execute the lease agreement with such modifications and in the final form as approved by the city attorney.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Is there a second?
A second. Mr. Terry Holmes.
Councilor Holmes. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion that's been seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arrowood. Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe that was a home run.
Oh, come on, guys. So painful. Okay. Rodney, how are you going to follow that up? I have no idea.
Just ignore it, Rodney. Keep going.
So, so now we are on Item C on the agenda. So public, another public hearing in consideration of a request by Scott Goldenberg to amend Chapter 18.120 of the Stanton City Code to allow attached private garages to be constructed in a front yard with a reduced setback for properties with existing non-conforming dwellings. Ms. Beauregard.
Rodney Rhodes are senior planners here this evening to walk through this.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Darby, Darby, city council members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
I would have to start off by, you have impeccable timing of the running of this meeting because this public hearing was inadvertently advertised for 7:30. So you're perfect. As you know, this is a request from Mr. Goldenberg to amend Section 18.120 of the zoning code. That section of the zoning code requires at least a 25-foot setback for all garages. And I believe that this was adopted in 1969 in the ordinance for safety reasons, so that someone could park a car in front of the garage. Because not everyone always automatically goes into the garage. And also allows a safe exit of the garage, so you're not backing directly into a public street. You'll see some of these historic garages in downtown that are right on the property line. And obviously, in this day and age, you do not want that. So he has requested a modification to that, an exception to that in certain circumstances. We worked with him and his, his agent, Daniel Hanson, from Ballsar and Associates, to craft the language that is before you tonight. The city attorney has reviewed this. So to summarize this, this would allow for existing non-conforming homes, those houses that were built too close to the street to meet current requirements, to add on an attached garage if it meets an 18-foot setback from the public sidewalk, if there is a public sidewalk. And the reason why that is 18 feet is because our zoning ordinance stipulates that a parking spot is nine feet wide and 18 feet long. So that would handle most vehicles. So if there's a sidewalk, there would be 18-foot setback from the backside of the sidewalk. If there's no sidewalk, the setback would be 23 feet from the edge of the city-maintained public street. And that's just in case the city has funds to, someday, put a five-foot sidewalk in there. And this amendment would allow flexibility for owners of properties in older residential neighborhoods while still providing for the safety of pedestrians and sightlines for motorists. Initially, we talked about this amendment just in the historic districts, but we have a lot of non-conforming houses throughout the city that could potentially benefit from this amendment. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on April 20th, 23. No one spoke in opposition to the request. And on a four-to-zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the amendment. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing. The applicant and his agent are in attendance also.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. We will now have a public hearing regarding this matter. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, and I will have Mr. Kessinger address you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and all the members of the council. I'm Daniel Hanson with Ballsar and Associates, the agent for the applicant. I think Mr. Rhodes summed it up pretty well. Again, recognizing it's a, it's more of a safety issue thing than anything, but I think we've crafted something that, that both attends to that and sort of benefits the communities as, as we're, as we're looking at them. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But otherwise, I'm going to stop rambling.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Daniel.
Mr. Kessinger.
Yes, ma'am, we have someone on Zoom.
Caller, go ahead, please.
This is Brenda Bede, 342 Sherwood Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I, my question is, if, if this conflicts with the historic district overlays, which would, which would take precedent?
Mr. Rhodes, can you speak to that question?
I don't see a conflict in the two. Obviously, any new structures have to go, in the historic district, have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission. They will be looking at it under their guidelines. And then staff would be looking at it under the zoning ordinance. So I don't see a conflict.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this time? Kessinger.
No, ma'am.
Okay, no one else wishes to speak at this time. I will close the public hearing. Someone would like to entertain a motion?
Vice Mayor.
Councilor Holmes.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. There's been a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council Robertson. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion made and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, now we will move on to Item D. And there's no public hearing.
All right.
Ms. Beauregard.
Yes, Rodney Rhodes will speak to this item this evening.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The next item is consideration of a final plan for Old South Village, Section 4. I'd like to first give a little background on this development. Old South Village is a planned residential development located off Commerce Road and Green Hills Drive. It was originally zoned R. Green Hills Drive. It was originally zoned R4 high-density residential, approximately 100 acres. And back in 2006, when the plan PRD was approved, it was for 317 residential lots and nine acres and three commercial lots. Back in 2006, the special use permit was approved. The preliminary plat was approved for the entire subdivision. And in the fall of 2007, approval was given for the first section of the development, which included the development of the first 30 units. The preliminary plat and master plan were amended in 2013. This slightly reduced the total number of lots to 286. And the final plat for sections two was approved in 2014, and section three in 2019. And to date, there have been 83 approved lots out of the 286. Before you tonight is the approval of 33 additional lots, which is called Phase Four. Staff has conducted a review of the proposal and has determined that the final plat is in general conformance with the approved master plan and preliminary plat. As I noted, this creates 33 new lots and includes the extension of Stonewall Jackson Boulevard, construction of a new street to be named Antietam Court, and also the extension of public water and sewer. I would note that the infrastructure construction plan has been approved for these improvements, and surety has been submitted to the city in the form of a letter of credit in the amount of $580,000 to cover the completion of those infrastructure requirements. And those would have to be completed, inspected, and approved by the city before they are accepted, officially accepted. At the March 17, 2022 meeting, the planning commission considered the request, and on a five to zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the final plat. And at this time, Mr. Kessinger could show what is before city councils consideration tonight. It is the final plat. It's a three-page document. And here's an example. Scroll down to page two or three. That's fine. And this shows the right of way for the roads. It shows the location, dimensions of the 33 lots. So what you are considering approval tonight is the location of the right of way, the creation of the 33 new lots, the approval of the extension of public utilities, and therefore their maintenance, and also that new street name. What I'd like to point out is what you're not approving tonight. You're not approving the details of the street. This right of way, it doesn't show the street. It doesn't show the curb and gutter. It doesn't show the sidewalks. It doesn't show the storm drains. It doesn't show the tot lot, the walking trails. There's a multitude of things that this does not show. It doesn't show the fire hydrants. That is an administrative process that is reviewed and approved by your professional staff. And the reason for that is because you have to have not only the education and experience to review these, you have to have certain certifications. So there are civil engineers that are professional engineers in the city that review aspects of this. You have those that are certified by the state for stormwater and erosion summit control. You have a certified horticulturist that looks at the street trees. This does not show the street trees. You have a fire marshal, and I'm quite certain he has various certifications he has to maintain. So this is what's before you today. This is what you're approving. If you like an example of what is in the construction plan, I have that also on here. And this is a very, very detailed document. It goes, you know, into detail as far as how the road is constructed, the curb and gutter, you know, the slopes of various things, you know, the base of, you know, this is a street, you know, how thick the pavement is, how thick the base is. And it shows the stormwater inlets and the rest of the stormwater management plan. But that is a construction plan, and that is not before you tonight. In attendance tonight, we have various city staff members. Tim Hartless, who's appointed by this council, is a subdivision agent. So he probably should be giving this presentation now. We also have Pete Kessinger and Willow Hughes, who are in the environmental section of the community development department. I'm not sure if we still have a city engineer in attendance, but I or any of them would be willing to take any questions you have at this time.
So Rodney, as I understand it, just to repeat, so I understand, we are just approving the final plat. This has been in existence for many years now. And this is the final, fourth and final stage of this subdivision?
It's certainly not the final.
Okay, fourth stage of this subdivision. So simply approving the plat, or the the location of the right of way, public extension of public utilities, but that would be approved or not approved. And if approved, you and your staff would be following up with making sure that the details of all of the laws and requirements are put in place.
That is correct. It's city staff, not my staff. They don't work for me. But yes, that is correct. And that, as I've noted, is part of the construction plan. And then, of course, there are various inspections throughout that process when it is constructed.
So city staff inspectors would go out regularly to make sure that everything is done properly?
That's correct. If I could state, I know there's members of the homeowners association here tonight that have legitimate concerns about stormwater and that subdivision. I've walked in that neighborhood. I can appreciate some of their issues that they're having. But what before you tonight does not address those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Anyone else have any questions?
One else has question? We'll entertain a motion.
This is a public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Counsel Robertson.
I move that council approve the final plat as recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second that. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion made by Counsel Robertson and seconded by Counselor Edwards. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Moving on to item E, we will now consider an ordinance amending the Stanton City Code Stormwater Management Criteria for Certain Solar Projects.
Mr. Kessinger, will the other Mr. Kessinger? The stormwater engineer will actually walk us through this item.
Evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Darby and counsel for having me. What's before us is consideration, again, of an ordinance amending Stanton City Code 1310.030. It's a technical criteria relative to stormwater management to comply with policy guidance set forth by Department of Environmental Quality for solar panels. So it's pretty straightforward what you have before you, but I'll give you a little background. On March 29, 2020, the Department of Environment and Quality issued a memorandum implementing more stringent post-development stormwater policy for solar projects. Up until that point, DEQ did not consider anything but the foundation and the post of a solar panel is impervious. And they're realizing through, you know, experience and just other other localities, other states, the issues with stormwater, they implemented this policy which considers the complete solar array is impervious. And so this ordinance is set forth to basically amend our stormwater code city of Stanton to consider solar arrays, the whole array is impervious per the DEQ standards, which they set forth on March 29, 2020. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I mean, it will address both the stormwater quality and quantity. It does allow for designers to use alternative methods. So they can either go by the state criteria for stormwater management, or we would review and consider other alternative methods. There are other states, Minnesota and Ohio, that actually have calculations relative to the size of the panels, and then it drops onto the ground, and there's impervious area that it covers. And then, you know, so they've got a calculation as to how to figure that in more detail. So they're allowed to present that as a possible design standard also.
Mr. Kessinger, I understand we have a solar project that we are going to be looking at in two weeks. So this is a timely, timely issue. Is this this was created in order to?
Correct.
To deal with that? Thank you.
Yeah, we had some citizen concerns and some other, some some citizen groups throughout the city lended their advice and expertise relative to us trying to.
Thank you for doing that. Looks like a lot of work. And I understand we're actually gonna come out ahead of the state requirement. So Stanton's gonna be a trailblazer again, putting these requirements into place before even the state requirement. So. I'm also.
Curious. Robertson? Can you? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just based on this future project, if you can go that, how much difference? Maybe I don't understand. How much difference amount of water, or how will that affect based on getting that water away? Let's say on the current standards, how do the would the new standards affect that?
They will be relative to the fact that the entire solar array panel, each panel will be considered impervious. And so there's, I think, 58 acre proposed solar farm. Most of that will be considered impervious, where is currently, and in the past, all they had to consider was the foundation that the solar panel actually set on. And so it was just wasn't practical, the fact that the rest of the solar array wasn't accounted for. It's not the same as a parking lot being impervious. It's completely runoff because it does drop off the panels, hit grass, and then they can convey it to a stormwater system. But they need to account for that in some way and implement other best manner of practices that would account for the quality and quantity of the stormwater, which which comes off that amount of impervious area, whereas before that would not have been considered.
Meaning they've got to tell us how in that water is going to move from here to there?
Exactly, exactly. And now it would be treated in between. And it post runoff cannot exceed predevelopment runoff. So they actually have to detain it in basins for enough time for different two, 10, one, two, and 10-year storms that as it discharges, it is not more than the predevelopment as it is now in the pasture, while we have the retention basins in order to.
So it goes up to a max of 10 years, you know?
Actually, the principal emergency spillway is a 100-year storm. But if you're familiar with the risers that are in a pond or a basin, there are different outlets at different points in that riser. And it's two, 10, and then if it tops the emergency spillway, it's a 100-year storm, which is pretty significant.
This water will, it doesn't go into the sewer system, does it? They have a way of just, like lines to make it filter into the property.
Correct. And they have to determine, part of the designers determine that there's adequate channel below where it will be discharging. So there's a lot that goes into the design. This this will impact the cost of the design and construction, but not significantly enough at this point in time for for this particular solar farm that's gonna be going in.
Who else? Thank you, Mr. Kessinger.
I appreciate the work you put into this, Pete. Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to adopt the ordinance and approve the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter 13, 10, 030 of Title 13, Environment, as presented.
I'll second it. Thank you, Counsel Wood, Arrowood, and Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion that's been made and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Right along. Let's see here. We will now move on to item F, consideration of a resolution approving city council's summer meeting schedule for 2023. Ms. Beauregard.
So at your last meeting two weeks ago, we had this as work session item, and it was decided that I would poll city council regarding canceling one or two meetings. And as a reminder, last summer, city council did cancel two meetings. I polled you all, and the majority, actually all of you, requested to cancel the first meeting in July, which is July 13, and the first meeting in August, which is August 10, which is consistent with what was done last summer. So before you this evening is a resolution to cancel those two summer meetings. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate everyone's flexibility in doing this. It's great. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Counsel Robertson.
I move that city council adopt the proposed resolution canceling the following city meetings, July 13, 2023, and August 10, 2023.
Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Counsel Woods. Mr. Kessinger, there's been a motion that's been made and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our final item this evening, and that is the strategic plan adoption. Ms. Beauregard.
I have a short PowerPoint. So we're finally bringing back to city council a summary of what came out of your retreat. You did approve the minutes and the report back in March. And now we're putting together what is gonna be essentially your strategic plan for the next couple of years. And so I'm gonna walk through that and then happy to answer any questions that you have. So you reaffirmed your vision during the retreat, a culturally rich historic city with an exciting future of innovation, growth, and resilience. You belong here. So we had a good discussion about that, but you did reaffirm the vision at your retreat. So I'm gonna kind of go through these rather quickly. You also reaffirmed your values, and I'll just go through these one by one. Integrity. And the bulleted statements are what you said during the retreat. You all kind of brainstormed what that meant to you. And then in the red box is the description we've had for the last year and a half. And in some cases, we did change the words slightly to reflect some of the new words that came out during the retreat. So the way we have this written now is the City of Stanton will be courteous and polite, and we will work to cultivate trust and a sense of integrity between each other and the public. The next one is inclusion and equity. And again, the bulleted items are brainstorm things that you talked about during the retreat as to what that meant to you. In the purple box, this would be the description. The City of Stanton will work hard to be inclusive in our thoughts, words, and deeds. We will strive to achieve diversity and representation, respect, and seek various perspectives and opinions, and endeavor to achieve equitable outcome. and endeavor to achieve equitable outcomes for everyone in our community. Excellence is next. I'll just read the yellow box. The city of Stanton is committed to excellence with a focus on ongoing training and continuing education for elected officials and staff. Fiscal responsibility, proactive communication and effective government and governance. So I think this captures what you all talked about at the retreat. Finally, engagement. The city of Stanton will aim to involve stakeholders in the decision making process to listen and have open, honest communications with each other and the community. So one thing we did talk about at the retreat was how these would be operationalized within the organization. And I'll talk about that a little bit more at the end because we can certainly take these values and put them out in the organization. We have a Stanton Employee Committee, for instance. And so there's some opportunities to take these values and to start applying those. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. Oh, I forgot about environmental, conscious, excuse me, there was one more. The city of Stanton will seek to understand and consider the short and long term impacts our decisions have on the environment and the community. So I think that is it for the values. Moving on to strategic goals and objectives, you actually reaffirmed your strategic goals. There's five of them, and I'll talk about those in a minute. The objectives that were brainstormed, the question was, what changes do you want to see in each strategic goal area? So what you have before you is results from that prioritization exercise and then discussions during the retreat. And a couple of things I'll say about objectives. They need to be manageable. So one to four objectives under each strategic goal and measurable. So we need to be able to tell you in quant in a quantified way and in a way that's a story as well how we are progressing in your objectives and in your goals. So measurable is really important. But they also need to be manageable. We can't have, you know, six, seven, eight objectives underneath goal. That's a lot for staff to do. And you don't, you don't need to see all that necessarily. That's that's that would probably would not be helpful as city council is either. So here's the first one, infrastructure. The foundation in physical, the foundational and physical framework, utility systems and transportation network that supports the city. There are four objectives that came out of your retreat. One is plan for and provide appropriate water infrastructure. Two, complete the infrastructure for Stanton Crossing. Three, focus on creating walkable spaces. And four, plan for and provide stormwater infrastructure and flood mitigation solutions. Under economic development, we took from your retreat and pulled out three objectives. Pursue targeted industries for the development of Stanton Crossing. So Stanton Crossing shows up in a few places, not surprisingly. Two, support the retention and expansion of existing businesses, attract new businesses and promote Stanton as a top tourist destination. And that doesn't seem like it goes together, but I think the point here, and you talked about it, the retreat is to how do we draw economic development and tourism together? And so I think this this objective captures that is to combine those. And then finally prioritize affordable housing and housing for working families. There is one objective in the West End, implementation of the West End revitalization plan. You all talked a lot and had a pretty large brainstorming session about the West End. And while there were many specific ideas, all of those will feed into that revitalization plan, which Ms. Kaufman is going to be on the committee that reviews those requests for proposals. So that is happening now. So we're reviewing those as we speak. So that that's a big objective, and there'll be a lot of items underneath that. So we wanted to keep it as as this large objective is that this will be the we think the thing that really propels activity in the West End. Under built environment, the first and most highest priority is separation of city and J and D R court operations from Augusta County. Second is planning for the future of public safety facilities. And third, understanding capacity needs and focus on repurposing facilities for city use. And then finally responsive efficient government, which touches every single city department. We have under the first item recruiting and retaining employees that are highly qualified, that continually have training and development, that are compensated well and reflect the community it serves. Secondly, we always want to prioritize regional solutions and problem solving. Thirdly, review, we're continue, we continue to review and implement changes to the city's organizational structure to better achieve council's goals. And the fourth item is develop an effective communications and engagement function. So I'll stop here and take a breath and see what input you have and what work you still think needs to be done. I will just say, I'm just going to skip it. Before I do that, I'll skip to the next slide. The management team will have a mini retreat on June twelfth. If you approve these tonight or have any changes and approve them, that's fine. But we're going to start talking about how we operationalize your goals and objectives. And we will come up with a plan that that it's actionable with measurable items. I anticipate our first report to you will be the end of the year. I think in six months, we should be able to report out on these pretty effectively. So that work will begin with the management team immediately. And so we're excited to be able to do that and then be able to report out to council and the community how we're achieving your goals and objectives. So I'll go back to this other slide and see if you have any questions or what work you believe still needs to be done.
I personally, I I like what's here. I don't know that we need to add more on to it. And I think as far as the second question goes, if there's any input as to what, you know, that's going to come after you come back with us from with a report to see where you've gone to.
Absolutely.
So.
I appreciate you not, I think, I think we again go, I like the idea of having it manageable so that staff can actually focus on this work. It's not the only thing we do, obviously. But knowing this is a high priority and these are the highest priorities of council is very instructive for staff. So.
Leslie, if you could just, I know this came from us. So sorry.
Which page are you on?
It values inclusion and equity. The second bullet point. Communicate differences in parameters of programs and services to citizens and businesses. I'm not sure what differences refers to. And I'm communicate differences. I know this came from us. I'm just trying to understand. Anybody else remember I ate differences in parameters of programs and services to citizens and businesses.
I feel like I remember we were talking about it. It sounds like some programs within the city. It's hard to know exactly where one ends and one begins, sort of like, like what?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Like an enterprise zone, you know, what does that cover versus a opportunities owner? We were trying to just be better communicative about what specific programs in the city do. And that kind of was part of just a an informational thing.
It was, did we also not talk about that that every program that's available and that this that we put out there is not used by every citizen?
Right. And if it's a program that we have that we're not advertising, then it's useless. Was sort of the idea. And this was sort of a a lower point under that about clarification of it. That's how I remember it, but.
Yeah, I think we need to.
There was a lot of coffee.
Well, the purple box is really the description.
Okay.
And I hate that it's two sentences. I kind of want to call that down a little bit. I tried to make them all one sentence. But that's really, that would be the description that's out there. If you're comfortable with that, and if you're not, we can continue to work on this.
Sure.
And take your feedback on that, which is fine, which would be great. Yeah.
No, that is, that's great. It's just I was trying to figure out what we were talking about when we made that bullet point.
Talking about communicate the differences. I think that was what we was talking about, representation. So when it says when we will strive to achieve diversity in representation, respect and see various perspectives and opinions. So that's including everybody in the parameters of programs, the different programs that we had. I think that's what we was talking about with considered like the West End and downtown. That we need to let, you know, the differences in those programs and how downtown works and how it wouldn't be conducive for the West End. Because we know what downtown does to get downtown looking the way it does and having all of those things with as DDA that West End doesn't. I think we was talking about that because it's in meaning equity and inclusion. So that I think we was looking on that parameter.
I think we were talking about
Yeah, that was.
The SDA program and what that would look like if you had something similar to the West End.
Just making sure that every neighborhood, every economic zone has similar access to or access to similar programs throughout the city.
Right, because where downtown pays, their businesses pay to have all of that. Then the West End wasn't communicated like that, saying that, hey, if you want to have something like that, then this is something, the way downtown have it, then West End would have to do something similar to that. So that's communicating the different programs and how they work effectively.
Now, for the SDDA, property owners pay a little higher tax.
Yeah.
And then businesses pay dues to 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 make it function. And then they promote all of us.
Yeah, so that's what that that's what that part need to communicate the differences in parameters, how it works.
I think we should also look into what we could do to extend the enterprise zone out through west the west side of town, West Beverly, all the way out that corridor.
That helped me show because that's my
Yeah, I just remember the context that
So my question is, do you all think that the words in the purple box reflect or capture the meaning? What you believe is the spirit of that value?
That's what we should be focusing on.
Really? Yeah, sure. Okay.
Then that's
If you're comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, then cool. Any other questions or comments? No other question?
I think when we should really concentrate on as much as we can on getting Stanton Crossing water sewer and plus we can't sell that property until, you know, we get these items in there. And that would be a great thing to take off our bottom line.
It sure would, and it's measurable. And it's seeing crossing shows up several places in this plan, not surprisingly. So.
Progress is being made, especially with the road and things.
Correct. Yeah. And we're looking for grant funding for the water portion. I think we have the sewer portion figured out, but now Mr. Vaughn should be applying for some grants for the water portion. So hopefully we'll have some good news on that. So.
Well, thank you. Is there any more discussion you want one at this point?
Just a question about under the economic development goal. We had talked about prioritizing workforce housing. And so as I think about that, I wonder and just wonder how how one, how the city goes about doing that. Is there much land able to be? Is there much land that is available? Are we able to restrict or incentivize developers to ensure that they're building properties that are affordable to the majority of the people here in Stanton? Can you disincentivize people from building homes that are out of reach of most people who live here in Stanton?
That that's something in the Housing Commission that I proposed, and we're moving forward with. Leslie has that on a coming.
We need to talk some more.
Yeah, we didn't know that down.
Set a date yet, but we need to nail that down.
Yeah, and I have a lot more specifics to go over on that. To, yeah, I, in my opinion, all of that is about making it worth their while for private developers offer housing at affordable rates on that. And that that's linking them with state and federal grant money.
Okay.
I think Ms. Edwards, too, when we sit down with departments, they will start brainstorming action items underneath each of these objectives. And so part of that would be what tools can the city bring to city council? Depending on what your goals are for affordable housing and housing. And then we have the commission, and then we also have a housing planner. So we have a lot going for that. And we just, we'll just need to bring back to what those tools are and what
Exactly.
what can happen and depending on what your goals are for that. And we'll be talking through that, obviously. So.
In a lot of those lines, we got, we did a informal head nod basically to move forward with that.
Correct. That's right. Yeah, thank you. We just need to come back around to that.
All right.
Well, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the, adopt the strategic plan.
Madam. Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt the vision, value strategic goals and objectives that resulted from the city council retreat.
Thank you, Counsel Robertson. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Counsel Airwood. Mr. Kessinger, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, now we have come to matters from the city manager. Yes.
You just got to sit down.
Sit down now. She's got to go again. Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on. I'm here. Let me pull my notes up. I'm so sorry. Talk amongst yourselves. I did. Oh, boy, that was embarrassing saying. I do have some matters. All right, here we go. Yes, I have a few things to talk about tonight. The first one is I, I think I've said this a few times, but I'll just remind everybody one more time. This is the last meeting before this actually happens. The recycling center will be closed on May twentieth, which is not this week, but it's the following week for a fishing derby. The center will be open from nine to seven on Thursday, May eighteenth, to accommodate recyclers. And we've been putting this out on social media, and I know there's signs also at the recycling center. On May fifth, the city of Stanton, city of Waynesboro and Augusta County collaborated to submit a grant application to the opioid abatement authority. The request was for a hundred thousand dollars for regional community visioning to assist the three localities in determining how to spend the opioid settlement funds through identification of shared priorities and desired outcomes. Any funds not expended on regional community visioning will be reserved for grant administration efforts. And if the grants, grant funds are awarded, staff will come back to council to request appropriation of a five percent match, which could come from the opioid settlement funds that have already been received by the city. And of course, council and the other two governing bodies will be invited to participate in the regional community visioning efforts. This is our first attempt to get some grant funds from the authority. So wish us luck. Mr. Vaughn asked me to announce that the city of Stanton is currently preparing its FY twenty three annual action plan for HUD and CDBG funds. The city will receive three hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in FY twenty three CDBG funds from the housing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. There will be a public hearing on these funds on May sixteenth, twenty twenty three at two P M. In these chambers. And the purpose of the hearing will be to obtain the views and comments of individuals and organizations concerning the city's housing and community development needs. And this information will be used in the preparation of the consolidated plan elements for fiscal year twenty three, CDBG and related programs. So May sixteenth at two o'clock, if you're interested in that public hearing.
Beauregard, excuse me, I think, has that been posted on the website?
I, I know, I think, I believe a press release came out. I'll have to check on your question now.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure a press release went out recently, but I will check on that. Okay, next to last item, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Johnston to to say a few words about paving. The city of Stanton is working with residents and property owners in Union Town to create an action plan for the future. And the city is seeking input from the community about the future of Union Town via a survey. And the survey will be open through May thirty first. And if you go on our website, Stanton dot V A dot U S, you can find that. Or you can call three, three, two, three, eight, six, two to get more information. I'm now going to ask Mr. Jeff Johnston, our Public Works Director, to come up and talk about paving. And that's started, I know you, you drive around, you've seen the road closures and the streets torn up to make them pretty again. So Mr. Johnson's going to talk about that prioritization process and how that works.
But first, I'm going to comment on make them pretty. Obviously, you know, this time of year, every year, we execute our paving program. And it certainly can appear to be somewhat random. What streets are paved and which ones aren't. So I like to describe the process by which that program is developed each year. And it is largely data driven. But it is not, but it also, but it's it's also a managed list. So it starts with V dot inspections. So annually, V dot inspects our roads and gives us their opinions of what conditions they're in, the roads that they feel are in the most death, most need of repaving, resurfacing. And they also give us traffic counts, their traffic counts. So a decision to pave a road is a function, not just of its condition, but also of the traffic loads. So a road that gets a lot of traffic will be considered differently than a road that doesn't get as much traffic, even though they have the same pavement condition. doesn't get as much traffic, even though they have the same pavement condition. They also will look more carefully at numbered highways, Route 11, Route 250, 254, because they have their own program for those roads. And we work in concert to make sure that, that we know who's paving what and what's going on. Additionally, our forces, obviously, are looking at inspections, our streets crews, and also our refuse crews who drive on every street in Stanton once a week. And so when they see things, they also, we also take citizen input. People will call up and say, can you please look at this street? Can you please look at that street? And all of those are inspected as well, and compared to what we got from VDOT, looking at the traffic counts, and we come up with the streets that are, that most need resurfacing. And it really just is resurfacing. So the asphalt you drive on is not what's carrying the weight of your vehicle, it's, it's what's, it's what's protecting what's carrying the weight of your vehicle, that subbase, that engineered roadway. And then, once we have that sort of prioritized data list, then we start to look at it and think, well, what makes sense? If we're doing, if we're going into a neighborhood and we're doing everything but one cul-de-sac, well, we just go ahead and do that cul-de-sac, too. Or if, or if the data says we should do three blocks of a street and then skip a couple blocks, and then the next four blocks, well, we'll just do the whole length, so that we get a nice contiguous, and I guess pretty, if I'm honest, surface, and then work it that way. And then, lastly, you know, paving is really a function of asphalt prices. So we'll start, we'll have our, we have our budget, we start the program. We always have, we know if, if we catch a break and have a little money left over, what things to do next. So we always program a little bit more than we think we're going to be able to do, so that we might be able to do a little bit more. Additionally, this year, for the first time, we've been able to work with Columbia Gas. Now, I'm sure folks have noticed Columbia Gas has been very busy throughout the city, doing very important upgrades of their gas lines, better service, safer service for all the citizens, but it can make a bit, it leaves an imprint on the roads. So we have been working with them in areas where the work they've done is significant. Instead of them just patching where they've dug, they will work with us to get the entire road repaved from curb to curb. So, again, not necessarily everywhere they dig, but so they will be picking up some roads that are getting repaved wholly and solely because of the impact of what they have been doing, which will, obviously, that will be one less road for us to pave down the road. One, a couple of things that really don't enter into it. It is not a cyclical, every so many years process. So, you know, two roads are paved, you know, two roads we pave this year, doesn't mean they'll be repaved the same year down the road. It's going to be a function of what the inspections say and what the traffic counts dictate. So some roads get repaved more often than others, and that's just a function of the data that we're using to make those decisions. And we also, we really aren't saying, well, we need to do something in this neighborhood, we need to do something in that neighborhood. We are very much looking at the data, we are very much looking at where was, where does that paving investment reap the greatest benefit? And that's sort of where it works out. For folks who feel like there's a road we've missed, please let me know, and we will make sure that it gets an inspection from our, our folks and from VDOT. The other thing I will say is, we really do try not to dig up brand new roads, but that you can't always, you don't always know. We know what projects we have scheduled. Columbia Gas will share with us whatever plans they have, and we try and de-conflict that, but things break. And sometimes you just got to put a backhoe into fresh asphalt, because you got to get down to what's broken. But we do, we do reach out to the other utilities. We certainly bounce our paving plan off of our utilities plans, but sometimes it happens. So any questions from council?
I just, one, how do you determine the car count? Do they put out cameras or something to, for specific time, or?
There's a number of ways you can do it. You sometimes see the pneumatic tubes laying across the road that are counting cars that come out. I know when I was in college, you sometimes see undergrads sitting on lawn chairs with clipboards, counting cars as they come by. And now, a lot of the cameras that are integrated into our traffic signals, in addition to, you know, seeing who's waiting to turn left, they can also provide traffic counts. So there's a lot more, a lot more ways now to get, to get that data. But we get that data from VDOT every year. And not on, not on every road, but, but certainly on, on the main through roads around town.
Thank you, I thought that was very informative.
Don't leave, Jeff. Ms. Beauregard, just wanted to really, really change gears. Can, well, you mentioned the, the fishing, you know, tournament coming up with the young kids and all that kind of stuff.
It's the senior fishing derby. We had the kids one last weekend.
Yeah. All right, well, it may be fine then. I, the reason I was worried about, you know, that circular, where the walkway around the little pond, and then the kids were like, and I was going to the dog park this morning, and you told me about some landmines.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted, I was going to say, if we do that, can we clean it up before they get there?
I'll happily pass that note to my friends at Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Well, like, we'll make sure, I'm sure they will, but we'll just let Mr. Todd know. Of course.
I'm to the dog park family. That's how dog park, thank you. Ms. Beauregard, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, I do not.
All right. Well, folks, we have now come to the portion of our meeting called Matters from the Public. I will now read rules for Matters from the Public. This part of City Council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's webpage. You're asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Welcome.
You, good evening. My name's Karen Magna, I'm the president of the Old South Village HOA. Tonight's consideration and ultimate vote, we really had no idea that it was only to approve the plat. I've been working closely with several of your city departments, and we do have some serious concerns up there, specific to stormwater management and that sort of thing. I've probably driven everybody in public works and environmental programs and planning and zoning out of their minds in the last couple of months, but we are really concerned. I, I must say that, that it was never clear to me that tonight's vote, and, and this whole letter that I sent to you earlier, yesterday, it only came to my attention just on Tuesday, so we didn't have a lot of time, but I, I did not realize that you were only voting on that. Having said that, we still, I still want to take some time to tell you how concerned we are. We are very concerned that the developer has historically not gone over and above to do anything but the bare minimum in terms of excavation and grading and stormwater remediation and diversion. Beauregard Drive and Chamberlain Drive have a common area that is almost identical to the one behind Section 3 Chamberlain and this new common area for these additional homes that are about to go under construction. I did not live in the neighborhood back then, but my understanding is they had to fight tooth and nail to get that stormwater management system put in place on the common area. I don't know how or who they were working with, maybe Pete can talk, speak to that, but we're just trying to stop a repeat of that, and we don't want that to happen again. It is a, it, it, there's an appearance that they're not always willing to work with the current neighborhood and the neighbors with their concerns. And it's also my understanding that they're going to be selling this large chunk of land as soon as all of the infrastructure is in place. So I feel like this is our only chance to really get it right. I don't want to keep annoying everybody, but I do want to stay on top of it. I feel it's my obligation to do that and to make sure that the people who have already had a lot of water problems on that west side of Chamberlain, and we have some residents here tonight that live on that side. I, you know, they've spent a lot of their own money to try to control that runoff, and I just feel like it's the right thing to do for the developer to build whatever he has the ability to build in this planning, and I mean, in this infrastructure portion of the development. So I just want everybody to pay attention to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Ma'am, come on, thank you.
I'm Kelly Hale. I am an HOA board member, and I'm also a resident on Chamberlain. So I just want to also express my concerns. I have been directly affected by the water situation. There's ruts in our yards, at least this deep, from the current build up the hill from us. So I'm just worried about the effort that we've had to put into that area coming down, and now stuff being built behind us to make sure that the appropriate drainage system is in place for that. I don't want to, I already bought a nice new home, I don't want to have to spend all that extra money to keep water from coming into my yard.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Kessinger, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? I hear some folks. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of City Council, Nancy Sarals, 3419 Cold Springs Road, Greenville. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you tonight as a neighboring Augusta County citizen who has enjoyed a relationship with the city on many levels, and tonight as a representative of the Alliance of the Shenandoah Valley, a nonprofit organization that envisions our region as one sustained by farms and forests, clean streams and rivers, and thriving communities. I'm here to offer both my personal support and the support of the Alliance on requests coming up on your agenda later this month regarding the solar project and to make some comments in general about solar in the city. First, let me say I did not come by these recommendations without a lot of consideration and thoughtful discussion with many folks on both sides of the issue. While I am absolutely certain that solar is our future for so many reasons, global climate change, improvement of soil and water, as a pressure relief valve against too much growth too quickly or in the wrong places, this might surprise some folks. I also think it's a way to save agriculture and preserve family farms, and I am certain that if, that all projects are not equal, solar projects are not equal, but done right, solar projects of all size can help all those things that I just mentioned. Done wrong, they can, there can be serious problems. I would like to commend the Stanton staff for making sure that the specific project that will be before you later this month is one that is done right and becomes a model for the future. Erosion and sediment control and stormwater management, like you heard about tonight, are planned at well above the minimum standards. There's a commitment to becoming certified under Virginia's Pollinator Plant Program and its rigid standards. Water resources on the property are nicely protected, and there's a promise that the land under the panels will not be graded, and there's a strong decommissioning plan, which is important. Further, given the underlying zoning of that property, a well-designed solar project is far better for the land and the surrounding community than the by right possibilities, such as a lumberyard, a contractor yard, a freight terminal, a tire retreading facility. And there's just no comparison between the visual and noise impact of some of those permitted uses by right and the nicely buffered, noiseless solar array. City planners have done a nice job in reviewing the project for compliance with the comprehensive plan, which is also required by state code. There's one point that I think the city could strengthen in the future, and the comp plan review noted that the solar energy facilities are not identified as a goal or an objective for the planned farm development areas. And that might be true at the moment, but I think that the city needs to add solar-related language into its comp plan that includes the synergy between good projects and farming. Let me explain what I mean by quoting Kermit the Frog here, who said, "It's not easy being green." I'm not sure that Kermit was talking about maintaining the vitality of family farms, but that's what I'm talking about. Keeping farms going generation after generation is not easy, and farming is a business, and businesses have to make money or they don't survive. Even though our area has always been a leader in ag production, there is nothing about a farm 50 or 100 or 200 years ago that remotely resembles one today. We have always had agriculture here and in the City of Stanton, which is really special, I think. And that's because farmers have been smart and agile and good business people. When the farm can't support the family or the next generation can't find ways to make the land work, then the next crop becomes houses or businesses or infrastructure. Solar arrays create a steady income stream to support the family farm and improve, if done right, improve water and soil resources. And, and if that's not farming, I don't know what is. So I am saddened that this piece of property must be pulled from the Ag Forestal District, but that's a necessity of the language in the state code and not a problem with this project. Moving forward, I would suggest that there needs to be work done by all of us with our representatives in Richmond, so that the relationship between a properly planned solar project and agriculture is defined, and land that meets those standards can remain in Ag Forestal districts, but that's something we can think about for another day. I would also suggest that while this project might become a model project, it's not your last solar project. The city does need to codify the hard work of the planners and hear the wishes of the citizens to create a strong ordinance and compelling comp plan language. And the Alliance stands ready to help you on this, should you be interested. I did serve on Augusta County Solar Committee that crafted the county solar comp plan language, and I'd love to help with this in any way I can. Bobby White's Carver, who is on the Alliance Board, and I have been doing a deep dive into solar projects for quite some time, both large and small ones, and we've developed actually a planning checklist for, for communities, municipalities, and for developers when considering projects, and I've got a copy I'll give you. So just thanks for taking the time to listen, thanks for your service to the city. Feel free to reach out to me if you have further questions, and I look forward to speaking to you again when this comes up on your agenda later this month.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Nancy. Yeah. Mr. Kessinger, no one on Zoom? Okay. Ma'am, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bertie Pennell, and I'm a resident of 310 Sunnyside Street in the City of Stanton. I had no plans to stand before any of you all this evening until Mr. Johnson spoke about the paving that's taking place in the city. I live on the corner of Sunnyside and Tam Street, and I've been an advocate for the neighborhood over the years. I've been all alone the majority of the time, but I think the opportunity for me to say something about the situation we've been faced with through the years, and I'm tired. We need help badly in our neighborhood, and I say that because we have a water drainage problem that occurred this year, maybe it was last year, because I've been staying in touch with Mr. Johnson about that situation. There's a water drainage coming from Murray-Balman University. They've been contacted, but from my understanding, they've done all they can do to correct the problem. So it's been left in the hands of the city to do something about that problem. So it's been left in the hands of the city to do something about that problem. The water drains from the top of Tam Street near the bottom of, or near my backyard. So I'm concerned about mosquitoes. I hear things about what could happen with, with the water, causing mosquitoes to come around. I want to know where do we stand with that? It's been a while since I brought up this subject, and it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. And that's what disturbs me. I also was disappointed when I read the paper the other day regarding the neighborhoods that, or let's say the streets that are being paved around the city. And I want to know what condition did you find in those upscale neighborhoods? It just didn't make sense to me to find out that those streets are going to be paved. But I want some answers. I don't know what else to do. How much longer do we have to wait for some answers? We have excessive traffic on Tam Street due to the population of Murray-Ballman University, which has increased. They have been sponsoring numerous games throughout the year. And I pray that someone will take a stand on that situation to, well before school reopens again. We need new pavement, and we definitely need to prioritize the water problem that exists. I've sent pictures to Mr. Johnson, and I came up with, I came up with an idea about how they could correct the water problem, and he agreed to what I was saying, but I'm not hearing anything. So with all that said, I appreciate you listening to my concern, and I look forward to better days ahead, and that will benefit our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kessinger, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Folks, is there anyone else who would like to speak from their Matters from the Public? Okay, with that being the case, then I will call this meeting of the Stanton City Council adjourned.